I call this December seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen Selectment's meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, regular meeting.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes of November nineteenth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay. And we'll be passing over the minutes of the special meeting until our next meeting. Okay, it's past the hour of seven PM. Hearing to consider an application from the Yung Tong Family Restaurant to change the manager of their all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license, the premises located at two seventy-eight Main Street. Representative from Yung Tong, if you want to run up. Hi. If you can just give us your name.
My name is Kanita Sah Sak Matri. I'm the owner of Yung Tong Title Restaurant for at least ten years.
Okay. And you're changing your manager?
Yes.
Now, this has all been checked out by Police Department?
Yeah, there's a memo in your, there's a memo in your packet. There is no, no concerns.
So, Members of the Board, any questions? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to approve the application as submitted by Yung Tong Family Restaurant to change the manager of their all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license at two seventy-eight Main Street to Kanita Sah Sak Matri.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Past the hour of seven oh five PM, Scott Chapantier, PPW Director and Weston and Sampson Engineers, presentation of town common design.
Hi, thank you. I have Mike Eastler of Weston and Sampson Engineers here, the design firm for the project. I'd like to give you an update on where the Town Common project is. This is an informational session only, there's no need for any actions by the Board, just to bring everybody up to speed on where we are and how we got to where we are. So, the design has progressed, we're at about the seventy-five percent design development level. Through the early design process, we had a couple of public charrettes. Our first one was on September seventeenth. We presented a couple of design concepts. It was a really more macro-level design review for the community to select elements from each design that they like and didn't like, so that the design team would have some direction from the community on kind of how to bring it together for a full conceptual design. We had a second design charrette on November thirteenth. That was a little more focused on material selection, the different types of materials that are out there and available, some small discussions about costs associated with materials, and to get a feel from the community on what they wanted relevant to a design direction. You know, old-fashioned New England common, you know, artistic looks, you know, Nuovo, whatever. Lots of different design alternatives were discussed there. So, we brought all that information together, got together with the design firm, started to advance the design forward. We did have one other meeting in between the two public charrettes. It was more of a stakeholder meeting, specific to one element of design that you'll see tonight. I'm really happy that this got incorporated into the design. It's very important to the community, important to a lot of the stakeholders, and it's a feature that we didn't see in the beginning of the design, but it came out through lots of public input, you know, emails, discussions, the charrettes. You've seen it in your packet, it's fantastic, I'm really happy that it's part of the Common project. So, like I said, we're just about at the seventy-five percent design level. The next step is development of construction documents, advancing the construction cost estimate. The goal of the project is to get this out to bid this winter, so somewhere in the January, February window, so we can award it to a contractor in March, and as soon as the construction season starts, groundbreaking can occur. That's, that's our goal. So, Mike, you want to go through our design and where we are?
Sure, absolutely. I'm going to be brief, as brief as I usually can be. Just as a quick overview of the current site, this is right on West Main Street, and it's the existing memorial area for the Civil War Memorial, as well as two adjacent properties. The buildings shown in this area have since been demolished. This is where Apple Fest is often held, as well as an additional piece of property that stretches back into a more wooded area, heading towards Asabat Park, which is just off the image here. Through the two discussions, we came up with a couple of general ideas, got feedback from the community at the first meeting about kind of the form and function, and then we refined that as well. The project as it currently stands conceptually, looks to create a very useful and usable New England common type space. We dedicate a large portion of the area to keeping the memorial around the Civil War Memorial, and then also adding the Gulf War Memorial. We've had a lot of discussions with the arsenals and with the public on what they're looking for there, and I'll show you an image of where it's moving towards momentarily. Next to that, we're looking at more of a semi-formal lawn space. This would be an open level area with a main entry into the, this new common, and then a more informal lawn space, a little more treat on the edge, a little less open, but still clearly visible for safety reasons, with multiple walks. So here you have multiple entries and multiple walkways ways to interact with the space. We have reused, some reused granite as a seating element slash informal scramble, a space for people to walk to, children to play on. We stayed away from initial ideations of playgrounds just because the Asabat Park is so close. You know, really kept this focus towards the Town Common, where uses like the farmer's market, the Apple Fest, and things like that could occur in this space. We've also created areas for shade, places that might be an additional, an alternative if additional funding is made available in the future. Again, we're still working out the final cost estimate for this, but, you know, we want to make sure that we're creating areas for people to sit right off the street, people to relax further into the space, people to explore while keeping the whole space very open, and keeping that kind of sense of formality from the most formal, the memorial area, to a formal, to a, to a less formal activity space. To talk about the memorial a little further, in conjunction with the arsenals and the last two community meetings, we're looking to create a space at the backside of that memorial piece of property, very close to where Ryan's plaque was put up very recently. So, if you're thinking about that space, if you've been there, it's exactly where we're looking to create, this space. This is based on a few local and regional examples of this. Bellingham has an excellent memorial for the Gulf War, and in this case, we wanted to try to create something that could be seen from the street, but still had a separation from the street, so it wasn't, you know, right there on Main Street. The space would be circular in design. One side would be ringed by the different Armed Forces Branch flags. There'll be a Central American flag and POW flag that would be lit, and then on the other side of the walk and facing the branches would be the Gulf War Memorial itself, which would be a low-granite seat wall with three granite pillars or posts. That would include a quote and the Service Branch medallions at this point, as well as the arsenal plaque, and room for more, God forbid if any more would come. So, it's really meant to be a nice counterpoint to the Civil War Memorial, you know, it's a very large memorial, so the flags help hold this space vertically, bring people back there where they can have a much more intimate experience with this memorial space. I believe that's really it in a nutshell, so.
Thank you. Questions from the Board, Leslie?
I was wondering whether you wanted to go into a little bit of detail about the pavement surfaces and the fencing that was discussed at the last meeting?
Absolutely.
I think that's interesting to hear about.
Okay. Through the last two meetings, we did have some discussion about pavement surfaces. A lot of it is going to be somewhat cost-dependent, but we're looking to use a mix of concrete, colored concrete and bituminous asphalt, depending on the formality, along with the potential use of areas of significance using a brick or a concrete paver system. In doing so, we'll focus the interests of the pathways and the walks to these important places, and not spend a lot of money on unnecessarily nice finishes. We're looking for durable and comfortable to walk on, accessible, this should be completely accessible for everybody, and things that will hold up to our New England winters, which we now get to enjoy right now. In terms of the fencing along the front edge, we had proposed a couple of different options. We looked at, again, some other local commons, and what seemed to be the most relevant, the most resonant with people at the meetings, was the use of a low, kind of a thick granite post, thirty inches high or lower, as well as two wooden posts in between, so kind of a modified post and beam, which would be very New England, very durable, very easily replaceable. So the posts, I believe, at this point would be painted black still, much like cantons.
Yeah, or Graffton's Common has the rough-cut granite posts, they're not like smooth polished, relatively short, stout, and then they have two timber rails that run between. The timber rails are relatively easily removed and replaced in the event there's any damage. They're easy to maintain, and they're very cost-effective. We look at some other steel alternatives, steel fencing is very expensive. Preference is to keep, like Mike is saying, the paver expenses where it's important, around significant elements, the perimeter expenses at the vertical elements, the posts and things like that, those are our goals.
And, in two notes on that, the granite that we are looking into for the memorial is actually a dark granite, so it'd be in contrast to kind of the standard light gray granite that you would see as just a standard building material, and the, the work that Graffton and the rough-cut granite pieces, you know, we might space them every, every few posts and have posts in between, but again, it gives you that formal look, that feeling of a common, so when you're driving by, there's something there that, that people will be pulled into in this space.
Anyone else? Julianne.
So, I have initially a couple of questions. And the, on the poster that you put on the floor, you, is there going to be a walkway through the center? Because I feel like when people enter the park, are they going to want to, will they, will they really walk around the edge to?
Yeah, that's a good question, and there will definitely be some original or additional wear directly into it, but those people coming to walk the park will walk the paths, and those people coming to walk into the grass will walk into the grass anyway. It is, is it a point of wear, and it's something that we may look into further, but currently we feel that at the expected amount of wear for everyday use, that wouldn't be an issue. And for large projects, not projects, large events, we've actually included a, sorry, small section here, which would actually be a vehicular access and secondary entrance. So that'd be something where it would be opened up with help by members of the city, I'm sorry, town. It's Monday. So, in that case, some of that heavier traffic would be directed on a supported system, so this would be like a grass pave or other type system that would still be green, but would allow the vehicular access and additional footwear through the space.
Okay. And the other thing is, on our diagram, there's one water source?
Yes.
Is that, so in your expert opinion, I guess you're, you're confident that that will be enough to get water to the back of the park?
Well, we wouldn't be watering the plants there. I mean, the, the perennials and the trees would be sustainable to New England. If the garden club decided that they wanted to have some, some annuals like they do in front of the Old Town Hall and around the signs, they'd be more than welcome to do that, and we'd provide host pickets for them at other facilities, so, yeah, one host picket.
And for the initial planting, the contractor will own the watering and maintenance and replacement of any dead plants for a series of years, typically one to two, and it would be with what the town standard practice typically is.
And, and the third thing is, Scott, you mentioned how important the stakeholders were in, in moving this along. Are we going to have an opportunity to hear from the committee tonight, or any of their?
There wasn't really a committee. The stakeholder meeting was specific to the Gulf War Memorial. You know, we had our Veterans Agent present, we had representatives from the American Legion present, myself, designer, planner, the Arsenal family were there. That was specific to talk about the Gulf War Memorial, so we could come up with an idea, a couple of design concepts that, that was pleasing to that stakeholder group, and then we came to the next public charrette with that design and a couple of alternatives within that design to the, to the charrette. So, it's, the Gulf War Memorial, the way it's designed now, started with the, a focused stakeholder group, and then went to the public for further input. There were a couple of members of the Town Common Committee present there also during the stakeholder meeting.
And are we going to have time to hear, are they going to be able to participate in tonight's discussion, or?
I, my intent was that this was going to be an informational presentation to the Board of Selectmen on the status and design of the Town Common.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board?
Leslie?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment too, getting back to the fencing that you discussed. I think a comment was made by someone at the last meeting that it, having a lower fence style like that provided a more welcoming perception too, as opposed to a, what are those, black wrought iron fences that almost look like, you know, you're trying to maybe keep people out? So, I think that that fence choice is, says something about us and how we feel about the park, so I just wanted to add, I thought that was a good comment that somebody made about that, so.
One more question, the comments from the Board.
I have one more question, sorry. So, electricity.
Yep.
Are we going to prepare for the future and at least get, you know, a conduit in or something to?
There's, there's electricity provided to the project. There'll be electricity at the pergola, there'll be electricity at the flagpole, that's the American flag that's being lit, and I believe we have one other electrical outlet on the other side of the, of the formal space. So there's three electrical sources. One of the comments that came out of the second public charrette was the desire to accommodate future lighting of these trees during the holidays, so two of the lights, two of the outlets are on the Route twenty side of the property to allow tree lighting.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pass the hour of seven fifteen PM. Fran Baxter from the Rick Leaf Master Plan Steering Committee, master plan update.
I feel like it was just yesterday when I sat here saying goodbye to you all.
Still sad.
Still have my parting gift.
Me too. I, I wished I had kept a recording of it. It was, it was one of my best moments. So, anyway, thank you very much, and good evening. So, Rick and I are here this evening just to get, to give you a little bit of an update on where we are on the Master Plan Steering Committee. I'll start with, just by saying, so right now, the Master Plans Steering Committee, as I'm sure you're aware, is fifteen members of the community, and they range from architects to lawyers to salespeople, insurance salesmen, just interested residents that were all appointed through the Board of Selectmen and/or their respective committees. It's a great group, there's so many diverse opinions and thoughts, and a lot of cross dialogue and discussion that really makes it a very vibrant group. We are, a part of the committee is also the consultants that were hired through the town. And just to give you a little background, that back in September of two thousand and seventeen, an RFP was advertised, consulting firms were interviewed, and VHB, which I've no idea what that stands for, was selected as the consultants. And so, I'm going to just bring us up to where we are right this moment, and then I'm going to hand it over to Rick, who's going to tell you about the process and where we are in the process as far as the work at hand. But for those who don't know, the press release seeking the volunteers went out, the different boards, we have had one, two, three, four, five, six meetings so far, we've had two public forums, we expect to have more. It's really been an open dialogue, and really, for me, somebody that has some experience with different boards, committees, and commissions here in town, I think it's really, it's a great group, and it's really coming along really very well.
Want to talk about the specifics?
Yeah, so basically, as we met, or initially with the consultants, you know, we made it apparent that we wanted this to be the plan of the town of Northborough, and we wanted them to assist it, assist us in making that happen, and that to the extent that they had a process we could follow, and they could provide some input as to what other people were doing, that was helpful, but we wanted the plan to be driven by the town and have them help us do it. And they've been very good that way in terms of not preaching to us what they think we ought to do, but listening to what we want to do, and then helping us put into some sort of understandable format. So the committee meetings have been driven pretty much by what the committee wants to talk about, kind of led by the consultants. And then this ability to collect public input has been very important. So basically, we've done two public forums to date, one in June and one in October. We had eighty-two people attend the first forum in June, and we had thirty-five attend the second one in October. And then the consultants put out on the website and through other, through other online access points, two surveys, one survey right about, right about the time of the first public forum, and then a second survey in the fall one. We had five hundred and fifty-nine people respond to the first survey, and we had two hundred and fifteen people respond to the second survey. So we've had a lot of input, both in person, from people in the community, as well as through these surveys, and the meetings that the committee is holding are open to the public, and we've had participation of people not in the committee attending the meetings. What's come out of all of this is there's been a number of items that people expressed an interest in what they think the town ought to be focusing on going forward, and three sort of rose to the surface more than any others. One which came up over and over again was downtown. That the, the community would like to see the town do something about revitalizing the downtown area, both in terms of what's provided and its appearance kind of thing. At the first public meeting, when the people came into the meeting, the consultants had provided a board with sticky notes and said, "Just write down what you'd like to see happen, what's most important things you think the town ought to be thinking about," without any prompting. And after that first night, when we took a look at the board, it was plastered with sticky notes that said, "Downtown, downtown, 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 downtown." And they added all these things up in maybe these bubble charts to show that. So that became a very important issue. The next issue hap, was around walkability and connectivity, that people want the ability to walk from their neighborhoods to schools, to public parks, and obviously, if this downtown area can be revitalized, to be able to walk into that area also. And along with that, better ability to do biking kind of thing, so walking and biking came up as an issue. And we had a mix of age groups that came to the forums and responded to the survey, but from the senior population, there was a lot of input around affordability of housing, different housing types. "I'd like to someday be able to sell my large home, my own, now, and stay in town and acquire something smaller and less expensive so I can stay here." So the question of housing came up a number of different ways, certainly from the senior population. There's a lot of feedback about some way to provide, over time, a housing option for that part of the population. And a lot of other things came up. So, we distributed to you the mission that the committee reviewed with the consultants and voted upon to approve, and then a series of goals to sort of accomplish the mission, which the consultants helped us to draft, and then that was voted on by the committee and approved also. You can see it covers a wide range of topic areas. You can probably see that the goals kind of cluster around some of these major topics that we've got from the community and from the committee as we met. What we're working on now is to basically develop recommendations or action steps underneath those goals, as to how would we go about doing some of these things, and the plan itself isn't actually going to come up with a roadmap to do all of this, it's just going to outline what the next steps ought to be, and where the areas the town should prioritize its efforts to make some of these things happen in the future. So the plan isn't going to really provide, you know, infinite detail as to how to do these things, it's just to flesh out a little bit what the next steps ought to be to move forward on some of these areas. So that's kind of where we've been and where we are right now.
Right. And as an example, we can talk about walkability. The, the master plan is not going to say where the sidewalks are and how they connect, but it will talk about how do you make things more walkable. One of the examples we had used was with open space. There was a real interest in the community years ago to develop some type of plan on how to protect open space, and an open space committee was formed, and it became their charge. So, at this point, we're looking at, we have our goals, now the action steps or recommendations to achieve those goals are a little, are more specific, but the actual nuts and bolts as to how you get to those actions are down the road at a more staff level or, or, you know, town staff level participation.
Or committees.
Or committees, yep.
And as we provided an open space committee, as Fran said, and that became a very effective way to manage open space, and with community preservation, it was a funding source, so things have happened about open space, and so it may make sense for some of these things to do the same thing, to get a group of people together that are passionate about this, let them work through, and make some recommendations back to the town what to do.
So the next step, we have, our next meeting is on January third, and it's open to the public, it's a steering committee meeting. We're, we'll probably have a second one in January to wrap up our recommendations for the action steps of, to achieve these goals. We'll then go forward after that in the February-March timeframe to have another public hearing, I mean, I'm sorry, public forum, and then a survey to the public will follow that as well, as we try to solidify what the recommendations are as to how to achieve these goals.
Now, is the plan to present this at town meeting?
No. It was, it's, that's not, it goes, the planning board is who doesn't approve it, but embraces it, I don't, what is the term? It's, they're the ones that will say, "Okay, here's our master plan." So it doesn't, it's, it's not necessarily, by town meeting, it should already be decided, and it's not recommended that it goes in open like that again, after it's all been done.
Okay. Questions from the Board, Leslie?
Yeah, first of all, thank you very much for working on this. I know it's been a lot of work. I've enjoyed the public sessions and the way they're run. It's not just one or two people standing up front, and people are sitting in the audience and raising hands and things like that, it's very interactive with the clickers, and then breaking out into the sessions at the, at the separate tables, and really having some very, very good discussions, I would say. The refreshments are very much appreciated as well. That's a good draw, and it kept me there. But, no, seriously, really, really nice job doing that, so it's a lot of work, and I think, from what I can recall, it looks like you did incorporate everything that I recall coming up, even in the vision statement, some things. I think there was a discussion about education and... I think there was a discussion about education, and it looks like you added that in separately and apart from, there's somewhere else where it mentions, oh, to welcome, educate, and inspire. You then mentioned the importance of education there, which I don't know if was in there originally, but it's a very good vision statement, I think. It seems to incorporate a lot of what I think people are very interested in, what's important to residents here. So, nice job with that.
Thanks.
Jason?
I'll just thank Fran and Rick for the work that they've been doing as chair and vice chair of the committee. It is a very large committee, a lot of people involved, a lot of different voices, so trying to manage that and keep everything running smoothly is certainly a job. And I also want to thank all the people that have turned out for these public information sessions. All the input that we've received has been very, very fruitful, and as Leslie said, it's always much more interesting to have those small group gatherings or something and have that discussion, as opposed to sitting in an audience and having somebody present something to you. So I just look forward to continuing the process.
I mean, I have to say, I mean, the idea of, the more people involved as it's developing, the more successful it will be. It's always better to get input and a groundswell of support and interest at the beginning, because then, you know, it's very easy then to appreciate it and adopt it as your plan. So, it's been fun.
Just out of curiosity, I know the plans for the next twenty years, and as the town continues to grow and there's a diverse group of people that come into town, has there been any effort by the committee to reach out to people of different ethical backgrounds to get their feedback?
I think we've been successful in, through the different forums that we've run, we've gotten a cross-section of people in town to come to the meetings. We also, at Applefest, we had a table at Applefest, we had the consultants there, we had committee members there. A lot of people came up and talked to us about what they liked and what they didn't like. We had pictures of possibilities in town, and we had the working goals and vision statements posted on boards there. So there's been a number of different ways to do that. So we haven't specifically reached out to particular groups. We've just made ourselves available as best we can across the town, and we've had, like I said, a good cross-section of people that have responded.
Okay, thank you.
I think just one other thing I'll add, is that even though, I guess, master plans are kind of forced through the planning board process and the town planner, and I guess the process is that the planning board sees the master plan, because there's a lot around land use and that kind of stuff, you know, in the plan. But I think the fact of the matter is going to be that, to make things actually happen in the plan, it will probably be the responsibility of all the boards and commissions kind of directed, you know, by you guys and the administrator as to how to do these things, how to fund them, how much the town can be involved with the town staff to make them happen, how much volunteers can work to make it happen. So I think the actual implementation of the plan, short of zoning changes that the planning board might want to do based on plan recommendations to manage land use and things like that, the balance of the plan, I think, will really fall back, you know, on your board over time to make decisions as to how to do some of these things, and if they're going to cost money to do, how to build that into capital planning. And eventually, I would assume more articles at town meetings someday that would have to be presented, to actually do some of this stuff. So eventually, I think it's going to be a town-wide effort, even though the planning board, it sort of falls under their purview to get a master plan done, I think the scope of this plan goes well beyond just some zoning changes.
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Anyone else? Julianne?
So to that, to take up on that comment, is in the process, like after, a year after this is adopted, do you do kind of a checkup on where we are and how we're moving along?
I think our hope would be with you.
Okay, good to know.
We'll be, we'll be, we'll keep an eye on it. We'd be willing to stay involved at some point, but it becomes the town's plan, and somehow it's the responsibility of the management of the town to say, "This is what the people said. How much of this can we do? How fast can we do it? How much can we afford to spend on it? When?" But, like I said, typically, as we mentioned before, the last master plan focused on open space protection and creation and acquisition, and so the town appointed an open space committee, provided a funding source, community preservation act, and a lot has happened. So to the extent that the town sees there's some things here that we really want to do, the question is, how do we organize a combination of staff and town people to take the next step?
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for all your hard work in the committee.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. Okay, it's past the hour seven-thirty. Kathy Jubert, town planner, approval, execution of conservation restriction for 301 Bartlett Street.
Hi. Hello. So what you have before you tonight is the final step in what's been a multi-year process for property located at 301 Bartlett Street. If people are familiar with that area of town, there's a very large warehouse that's under construction right now that you can see from the street. But as part of the permitting process, when we originally permitted this in, through the various boards and through the state in 2008, there was priority habitat discovered for a particular kind of salamander. I think this was also part of the high school, also happened at the high school. So there's a whole swath in that area from West Main Street down to Bartlett, and then actually past Bartlett Street. But this particular project, it falls in some of that priority habitat. So what the state did was, through their review process with the natural heritage, and then through the divisions of fisheries and wildlife, they worked with the developer and requested that there be an area that would be, as we called, have a conservation restriction placed on it, so that no building could happen there, could ever happen there. And with the conservation restriction, it's something that the, that comes out of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs on the state level. It's been reviewed by town council. The, typically how a conservation restriction works is someone has to hold the restriction, and in this particular case, the Conservation Commission has agreed to hold the restriction, which means they have the responsibility of, you know, going out and monitoring that site, which our conservation agent will do on an annual basis. And so tonight, what you have before you is the, like I said, the final step for the conservation restriction. The Conservation Commission has already agreed to hold the restriction, and at their meeting last Monday evening, they signed their portion of the restriction. And then there's also, as the chief elected officials of the town, the requirement for you to also accept and to sign the conservation restriction. So that, basically, that's what I'm here before you tonight. There was a map, or there is a map in your packets. If anybody has any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer any. But very simply put, the, there's two areas, because the area is dissected by the aqueduct, which, you know, the salamanders go up, go up and over. But anyways, the, so I just couldn't say salamanders, I'm sorry. But anyways, so there's two areas, but it's all covered under one conservation restriction. It is about twenty-three acres or so in total.
Salamanders, are they not supposed to go in the aqueduct?
No, they can't. I mean, they, there's a little sign out there, "You can cross." So it's all, it's all grassed and, you know, bushes, and so, I mean, they just, they apparently just naturally, you know, followed this area. So it's been studied by the state, by people far, far higher up than me, as far as where, you know, by biologists, as far as where this habitat should be. I mean, as far as how much of it should be protected and, you know, what these animals need. So like I said, we went through this with the, with the high school also. But anyways, that's what, that's what all the state review results in, is that we have this conservation restriction proposed.
Okay, more questions from the board? Jason?
Kathy, there's a line on our cover page for this that says that the board approved this exact conservation restriction in 2008, but the state's requiring a new updated one?
Yes.
What exactly is updated? New forms? New forms?
Exactly, exactly. It was approved by this board, it was approved by the Conservation Commission, it went back to the state, and I'm not throwing the state under the bus, but it, there was some change in staff, and so it sort of languished on, you know, in a file on a desk, and then new forms then became available or that we now have to fill out. So that's, that's what we're doing. It was rediscovered, that it had never been, you know, went through the final process with the state.
So is it correct to say that there's nothing of substance that's different now?
It's exactly the same.
It's exactly what was previously approved, just on a new form that the state is happy about.
Yep, that's, that's all it is.
We'll be happy to sign this, then.
Yeah, and town council has obviously reviewed this.
Sure.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I move the board vote to approve and execute the conservation restriction for 301 Bartlett Street as submitted by town planner Kathy Jubert and reviewed by town council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, it's past the hour seven-thirty, 5:00 PM, Applefest follow-up discussion, to discuss the event schedule expectations for future planning of the annual Applefest celebration. We talked about this back in May, that we would bring it up again in the fall after we had Applefest, and it would be a period of time that we could at least reflect and not be too close to Applefest and not have everything scheduled already, so. So saying that, we do have members from Applefest here, and we also have a letter from the Rotary Club in our packet, and I have the same concerns I had in the spring, that we are maxing out the DPW, the Fire Department, and the Police Department. And I think that personally, I didn't feel that we had the turnout for the parade that we normally do, having been somebody that's been on this parade forever, missing one Applefest. It's like, I felt like if we had all the events at the same time in the center of town, we might have had a better turnout for the parade. Saying that, I'd like to open it up to members of the board first. Jason?
I think I'll echo that sentiment somewhat. I know that the, and first, I'd like to say that I certainly appreciate all the work that's done by the Applefest committee to plan the event and to organize all the activities. It's a tremendous amount of work, and I think everyone recognizes that and appreciates that work. Speaking as someone who's walked in the parade these last several years, though, I have to say that my impression has not been that it has been an increasing or improved turnout compared to prior years. So I don't feel that that's, based on my own observation, I don't feel that that's something that causes me to think that Sunday is a better day than Saturday. So I'd be interested to hear, I guess, what other board members feel about it.
Leslie? I feel that right now that we're in a period of transition with Applefest, that Applefest is a large community event. I think it's only going to get bigger. And I, having been uptown Saturday of Applefest, between the street fair, the farmer's market, the, and then the fireworks, barbecue, there's so much going on on Saturday as it is, I am now beginning to feel like it's too much to have a parade thrown in there. It almost makes it frenetic. I spoke to a lot of people during Applefest at the town, the market that was being held in the town common area. I have spoken with some members of the Applefest committee. I've spoken with other residents just to get their opinion and find out how they felt about the parade, for example. And it's funny, I actually had to run home and write down all the comments that I got because I didn't want to forget some of the comments that some people made. It was interesting. The people who felt that Saturday was good said that they liked the idea of all the major events on one day, that they were only devoting one day of the weekend to Applefest, that the parade maybe drew more people. There was the concern about safety personnel being required for two days versus one. Someone else said, "If you have everything on Saturday, it doesn't interfere with the Patriots game." So, I mean, you get a lot of different opinions. Everybody has a different frame of reference, what they want to do, the time they wanted to devote to this particular event. The people who felt that Sunday was good said so because they felt that there's too much going on if everything is on Saturday. There are kids who play in soccer, and I went through this myself with all three of my kids playing soccer. I missed so much of Applefest, running around, because not all the games were in town. They were out of town a lot of times. So we would get back into town, and stuff was over, and we'd missed all sorts of things. I personally felt, as an individual, that it was more relaxing to have the parade on Sunday. I enjoyed Saturday, I liked the idea that it was a little bit later in the day on Sunday, and we could enjoy the parade. I'm not sure about the attendance, maybe it was a little bit less, but on the other hand, we have to decide what the goals of the parade are. Are we trying, is the goal of the parade to draw as many people as possible? Are we just trying to make sure that it's something that's available, that we can get the people in it that we want, and maybe through a transition period, people will eventually schedule themselves around the fact that the parade is on Sunday, and more people will eventually come? I think a lot of things, as they evolve, go through a transitional period, and people eventually kind of come around to the different schedule. That's what I could see happening here. I do just feel that there's so many major events, and if we try to over, I see it as almost overcomplicating it by, let's say, everyone's up to town at the street fair or the market, then you're, everybody's running off to line up for the parade, and the street fair is going on, and then that's over, and people are running from there to Lincoln Street. I think it's too much. So I have come to that conclusion. I know that the overtime expenses have been paid by the Applefest committee. I had also heard some feedback that safety personnel who were talked to really didn't seem to have much of a problem with it personally. That's one comment I did hear. I would like to see what we can do to make it work, if there is any kind of compromising that needs to go on in terms of safety personnel that are being asked to work Saturday and/or Sunday. But I feel that from a logistical standpoint, that the parade is too much on Saturday. I would like to see it moved to Sunday. I like the way it worked out this year.
Any other comments from the board? Tim?
Yeah, there's a lot of conversations, much like Leslie did, with people around town. I get a lot of the same, or most of the exact same feedback. The only other feedback that I got from people was the start time on Sundays. It was just so hot, and I know it's tough to start it earlier on Sunday because of the conflict with religious services around town, but that was one other piece of feedback that I got, that having it start in the afternoon on Sundays, especially in that heat, that it was tough. I think that it takes a little bit of time for people to get used to having the event on a different day. So I agree with people that the turnout for the parade last year seemed to be lower than in previous years, but I also think that's driven by just habit, and I just think it takes a bit of time for people to get used to going to the parade on Sundays. I think ultimately, this decision each year is going to be driven by turnout. If people turn out to the parade on Sundays, then we have the parade on Sundays. If people don't show up, then maybe it's time to reconsider. So it's, you know, it's, that's, that's how I feel. It's the Applefest committee's responsibility to help drive turnout for the parade, and as long as the turnout's there, then I agree with you that it's, having both things on both days is tough. It's having that many people and that many events going on downtown on one day is a lot. But if everything's going on on Saturday, and then nobody shows up on Sundays for the parade, then I think we need to revisit. So I think having the parade on a separate day makes sense for now, as long as the turnout is there.
Julianne? So I, I agree with Tim and Leslie, but I'd also like to add that as Applefest expands, there are more, more activities that are added, and I can remember at least the cultural festival was on Sunday, and that was a huge effort, and just, I don't know if they would have had the space on Saturday. So it's almost like we have to add another day just to accommodate the other groups. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I think for businesses, it's easier to have the parade on Sunday. And... And that's, that's what I have to say.
Okay, Sunday's always been part of Applefest. It's not adding another day.
Sorry?
Sunday has always been part of Applefest.
John?
Can I just add a couple of comments before you, you move to the audience? I just want to make two points. One, the importance of having this discussion here is to, is to make sure that the discussion and the decision is transparent. In years past, uh, it's been unclear who made the decision. And with any decision like this that you make, you can even see it on the board. Some people are happy, and some people aren't happy. And then we hear about that. And then it comes down to, well, where, you know, where was the decision made? When was the decision made? And I, I didn't get a chance to give my, my input. So, um, one of the reasons for having this discussion here is for transparency and to give people a chance to express their opinions. So that's priority. The second is, and I said this in the, uh, previous discussion, staff is going to implement, implement with a smile whatever the board decides. So, um, Saturday is easier for staff than Sunday. It just is, and you know that. But Sunday isn't impossible for us. If that's the decision as a community, that that's what we want to do, we will make sure that we implement that. And so I don't want this discussion at any point to be about the staff and, and whether or not we can, we can make this work. We can make it work, and we will. One of the big issues that we faced was not knowing that it was going to be on Saturday or Sunday until too late in the game, where it made it difficult because it's a force in, and we're requiring people to be here. So if we know in the fall, for next fall, and we make sure the staff knows, we can all plan accordingly. So that's my two cents.
And we're picking up on that. Should we decide to do it, uh, the board votes that Sunday is the day to do it again next year, I would look to, in the fall, looking at it again based on how much turnout we had.
Yes.
I think it's something the board should look at every year, um, early in the fall after it's over. So that would be my recommendation to this board. And I'm going to open it up for some brief comments, so Michelle?
Can you make a presentation to the board?
If it's short.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I thought you left me out. I was going to feel hurt.
So, uh, thank you for having us here tonight and this discussion. As you know, um, we talked about this, uh, last spring. Applefest, we felt was a success this year. It was over ninety degrees with high humidity on Sunday, uh, which is what we thought was the light turnout. It was just extremely hot and humid. I've been doing Applefest for many, many years now. I don't think I've ever seen such a hot Sunday as we had. That might be the turnout. But what we want the board of selectmen to maybe think going forward, and your comment that you made about attendance, is to think about something else. And in our discussions with the, um, businesses around town and the residents, clearly, Leslie, you sort of echoed what we heard from the residents, which was if Applefest and all the community groups are going to have an even share of a weekend, not just one day, we had to spread it out over three days. In fact, it's four days now, and it's being set very successful. And like you said, Juliana, that event on Sunday with the cultural affairs was a, a success. It would not have been had we not had the Applefest parade feed into that. And I thought, um, Saturday was phenomenal because, um, the street fair, I mean, the, uh, street fair and the farmer's market, for the first time ever, we talked about with the master plan about walkability. I saw people walking up and down Main Street shopping. So in your packet, you have twenty businesses that have asked and requested the board of selectmen keep the parade on Sunday. And there's a real huge impact to businesses that I think the board of selectmen need to think about. Closing down a major highway where people come from other communities to Applefest has a huge impact on them. It has an impact on the banks that have signed this, on hairdressers who have signed this, and stores. The busiest day of the week for any small business along Main Street is Saturday, not during the week and not on Sunday. And when you shut down Route Twenty for almost two hours, it has a huge impact. I mean, we have Innovations Hair Salon, who doesn't take any, any appointments that afternoon. We have the banks who tell their employees, "Get prepared to leave early because the parade starts at noon." It has a huge impact that I don't think we've actually taken into consideration. And I think if we want to support the businesses in our community, we want to think about why Sunday is the best day. I don't want the level of, I don't want the, the, the decision-making being on, "Oh, I was there, and I only saw fifty people downtown." I'd rather it be, maybe there was only fifty people downtown, but the Saturdays did a great business. You know, a lot of people went shopping up and down Main Street. I'd rather that be the look from the board of selectmen versus looking at how many people were downtown on Sunday. So in your packet, you have twenty businesses all up and down Main Street who have signed. We probably could've gotten fifty or a hundred. We just simply didn't have the man-hours to go and get the manager to sign each letter. But overwhelmingly, not one of them said, "I prefer it on a Saturday." Most of them said, "Thank goodness you're moving it to a Sunday," or "Please keep it on Sunday as it's been for the past three years," because it allows them to do the business that they want to do. Secondly, you have in your packet, almost a hundred and twenty-five residents who've signed, asking you to keep it on a Sunday. Again, we would've gotten more signatures, but we didn't have the time. And then thirdly, in your packet, you have the Girl Scouts have asked to keep it on a Sunday. The Knights of Columbus, I don't know if there's someone here from there. They have a mission tonight, but they endorsed it, as well as, what was the other group we have now?
Town Com.
Oh, the Town Common Committee asked, because it would impact them. So one of the things that, that we wanted you to really think about was the businesses that have not been a part of this discussion. Has been, the discussion has been, I haven't seen that many people around the parade route. I think if we all rally together and get people out on Sunday, they will come out on Sunday. But I think what we need to do is support our local businesses and not put it back on Saturday because it has a direct impact on them.
Thank you. All? That was certainly short, thank you. Any other discussion from the board? Jason?
Well, I certainly take the point that there's an impact on businesses on Saturday. I think my concern in part has been that if, if the attendance on Sunday isn't going to be that substantial, it's an enormous amount of effort and trouble to go through to arrange the parade in the first place. So I think I would like to, um, I'll be happy to support it for next year, retaining it on Sunday. But I'd still like to have this conversation once again, as we see over time, um, what the real impact is or what the real effect is, um, in drawing people, uh, on that Sunday afternoon slot. Thank you.
I have somebody else from the audience that would like to be recognized.
Yeah, Ed Bumbach from Oakley Crawford Street. I've been marching in the parade for many, many years. I coordinate the color guard, and usually officially, uh, lead the parade. I would like to say, uh, this past year, the family members of the color guard were actually able to participate in the fair together. My wife and I were able to go to the fair together because I didn't have to go separate to the parade. I think family-wise, uh, most of the, the fair is, uh, a lot of adults, and the parade is usually children. So the combination of having it on both days makes it more of a family-oriented type of, uh, affair. I would strongly recommend that we keep it as two separate events.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Alan Archwald, Ridge Road, Northborough. As an active Shriner and participant in the Northborough Parade, I also participate in approximately between twenty and twenty-five parades in various towns across the state every year. And I can tell you, when the temperatures get above ninety, the crowds go down. So it's not so much an interest factor as much as people are concerned about sunburns on their children, heat stroke, things of that nature. When we sit in the mid-eighties temperature range, the streets are usually jammed. But also, out of the approximately twenty-five to twenty-six parades this past year, twenty, or twenty-one of them were held on Sundays for the simple reason they don't want to impact businesses in these towns and communities. There were three parades that were held on Saturdays that do have that effect. And then it was also one or two parades were held, like, on the actual date of the event, the Fourth of July, things like that. But taking it as a broader view and being able to, uh, see what goes on in the other towns with it, I just thought I'd share that with you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Leslie?
Uh, the only other thing I would like to add is that I do agree to a point about revisiting it every year. But I guess my concern with that is that unless the Applefest committee really felt like for some really horrible reason, we need to move it back or change the day, we need to, I think, solidify some sort of plan because every year, otherwise it's this, it's this question mark of, in terms of what the Applefest committee says to someone for the next year. You know, do they really want to have to say every year, "Well, we've got to wait till, let's say, in October, November, board of selection meeting, then we'll find out, then we can let you know." I don't know if that affects being able to get vendors, people in the parade, you know, that, that sort of thing. So I also do feel, again, that it's an evolution, that if we're going to transition, eventually people rally around that plan. And I feel like for the Applefest committee's sake, we need to have some sort of strength in a decision, that it's going to be some, something moving forward. I do understand the need to revisit attendance, but again, that's why I said I don't really know. I, I guess we need to figure what the goal of the parade is. I mean, are, are we trying to get out to a hundred percent of the community? Are we just trying to do our best, and it's some aspect of Applefest that we're providing? So, um, that's just my thought about that, because it's hard when something of this magnitude is up in the air every year. So I just wanted to add that in.
Any other comments? Tim?
Just on that, I think it's, it's, my concern is in, if, if, if the town didn't have to do anything to support the parade, then I think you didn't have to worry about turnout. But the fact that the, the, the services have to go out and support the parade, no matter if one person shows up or ten thousand people show up, they still need to invest the same number of man-hours. So I think we have to consider that aspect of things as well, that there is the, the safety aspect that needs to be considered, no matter the turnout, so.
Anybody else from the board? Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to hold the parade on Sunday of the annual Applefest weekend.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor. And opposed. Okay, thank you, and good luck. Okay. That brings us to reports. Julianne?
Okay, so first, I'd like to report on the Cultural Council. They were recently featured in a webinar that was sponsored by the Massachusetts Cultural Council. The topic was organizing a first festival, and Northborough and Belchertown were the featured groups on the webinar. The council's very busy right now reviewing grant applications, and I'd also like to draw your attention to the fact that they have designed and crafted a beautiful holiday ornament that is for sale at the Two Ninety-One Coffee House and Craft Works. Secondly, the Historic District Commission's project of resetting and repairing stones at the Howard Street Colonial Cemetery is nearly complete, thanks to the committee and Scott Sharpinter, who managed the project. The commission is currently requesting CPC funds for sign replacement at the Howard Street Colonial section of the cemetery, as well as for a sign at the Brigham Street burial grounds. And I attended a meeting of the Housing Authority, and I would like to ask anyone who's interested in serving on that committee to please contact the director at the Housing Authority office. And finally, I'd like to say that this is the season that's filled with holiday obligations and end-of-year duties that can make us all too busy. This year, I was fortunate enough to be reminded just how precious our time on earth is. December first began with the unveiling of a plaque honoring Specialist Brian Arsenal, who served in Afghanistan. It ended with the lighting of a tree that was planted in honor of Private First Class Neil Ellsworth. He and Private First Class David McAfee both served in Vietnam. We are very grateful to all of those who have served and are serving, and to their families. I hope that the family members who have loved ones who served for us found some comfort at these events. There were many other activities December first, and I'd like to thank the committees and volunteers who made it all possible. And to end, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday season and best wishes for the new year.
Thank you. Tim?
Uh, just to echo what Juliana said, uh, just to thank you to all the committees around town that, that put on all the, the holiday events that have been, been taking place, uh, throughout the, the community. I also wanted to thank, um, the town administrator and the staff for the Financial Trend monitoring meeting that we had, uh, last week. It was very helpful as we planned, uh, for our next fiscal year. The information is, is, uh, extremely helpful. Thanks to the Fire and Police Department for their monthly reports. And just, um, happy holidays and, and have a safe and, and happy new year. That is my report.
Thank you. Leslie?
Okay, um, kind of piling on here, I guess. I also want to thank both chiefs for their reports. They are full of all sorts of information, a lot of statistics, and some of the fire department information is shared on Facebook, which is nice. Again, our goal is to be as transparent as possible, and it's nice to see that information out there. The tree lighting was wonderful. It was a great crowd for that, several hundred, I think. It was amazing, actually. The Z-School chorus sang did really, really well. Former Algonquin grad, Lenya Henningson runs that group. She did a great job. She herself has a beautiful voice, so it was really nice to see her there doing that. I do want to thank the community affairs, uh, members. They did a terrific job. It just grows every year. It's amazing. And it's always pretty nice weather, kind of cold, but it's nice. It's nice, and I think people really enjoy the food and the raffle and the trolley and, and everything about that day, um, which, as Juliana said, did begin with the Brian Arsenal, um, plaque. And I think that was a very nice turnout as well. There was some nice speaking that went on, and I, it's, it's just a very moving event every time we talk about the arsenals and what's being done there. And it's just nice to see a community rally around a family like that. So that really meant a lot to them, I, them, I know. I also attended the, uh, Local Emergency Planning Committee meeting on December eleventh. I would just want to thank Chief Parenti and Mike Borowitz, who ran that meeting. It's nice to see, uh, they're mostly risk managers. Is that correct? Okay, from?
Risk managers from a lot of, from the, uh, the various commercial.
Yeah, yeah, it's nice to see them. It's always a, a nice crowd, um, and the way you were able to get information out to them so that everybody understands what to do in the event of an emergency. So that's always a very interesting meeting. So, uh, thank you very much. That is my report.
Thank you. Jason?
Uh, yes, I, I would like to, uh, just make note of the passing of, uh, former resident Warren LeBeere, who passed away, um, on December fifteenth. Warren was very heavily involved with the town, served, uh, on the board of selection. Also, uh, was involved with the Council on Aging, Youth Commission, um, some of the arts and everything. He was, uh, owner of an insurance agency in Northborough through the seventies and eighties. He, uh, I was fortunate, uh, back in two thousand and one, uh, we, at town meeting, we approved the creation of the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund, a fund that was intended to provide some, uh, tax assistance to low-income and disabled, low-income and disabled elderly citizens. Warren was one of the volunteers to serve on that committee. He and Rosely, Henningson, I have. So, um, it was wonderful to work with him. He was a very interesting man, a very direct man. And, uh, just, uh, wanted to make note of that. Uh, and I'll just, uh, also pass along my wishes for a safe and happy holiday season and new year to everybody. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And I'd also like to pass on my sympathy to Warren's family. Actually, Warren and I kind of flip-flopped. I took Warren's seat, and he was, he went to the appropriations committee. So, um, Warren was a great man, a gentleman, and I was always very concerned about the town in Northborough. So he was an asset to the town and the town all the time he served. The tree lighting was a great adventure. It was well-attended, a lot of people, nice, just a really nice night. There was a little bit of problems still with lighting. If we could figure out a way, the area itself was well-lit, but if we could shine a little bit of light in the back section, because we did have somebody fall. So, um, in the future, we could just address another light. I don't know if we're going to ever be, have enough light down there, because that is kind of a dark street. And I'd like to also thank the Trolley Commission, uh, Committee, because they were a group of volunteers. They weren't even the citizens that normally do it. And they did a great job. Those trolleys were running around all day, and you saw people standing in front of the businesses. And it was really, really nice to see all the businesses active, even the library. There were all kinds of people standing in front of the library waiting to catch a trolley, so. So it was a great day. So, and that concludes my report. John?
Well, I've got some, uh, really great news to announce. As you know, every year, the town puts together, uh, an annual report.
As you know, every year, the town puts together an annual report. This is our annual report from this year. The Mass Municipal Association has an annual report contest, and a lot of work goes into this document by all the departments. And since we moved to this format, which is, for those of you in the audience, it's free, and it's also a calendar. So, feel free to take a free sample out in the hallway. I'll spare you the suspense. We took first place statewide.
Wow.
The last time we took first place statewide was in two thousand and ten. We took first, second, and third, two thousand and ten, eleven, and twelve. And so, we're back on the board again, and I do want to give some special recognition to Diane Whackel, who is our annual report coordinator. So, Diane does a lot of the layout and chases all department heads to make sure that they get their documents in, and we put this together. But this is just another good example of a good document that communicates excellent information to our residents. I'll go back to years ago, before we changed format. It was almost a compilation of just random reports, and people felt like it didn't get read, so they didn't put a lot of time and effort into it. We treat it in this calendar format. You have a limited amount of space. You need to make sure that you're communicating with photos and charts and graphs and bullet points, so that people can read it and get something useful out of it. But, in addition to our award-winning budget, we have an award-winning annual report. So, at the MMA conference this year, we'll get the award presented to us, and we'll bring it back to the board. Diane's going to come into Boston with me and accept that award, so. But great news. And I'll end on that high note.
Okay. And Diane does put a lot of work into that book, and she's always looking for an idea for the front-page cover, so if anybody's come up with a great idea of something we could do different, Diane's receptive to all kinds of ideas, so. This brings us to the holiday season, which isn't on the agenda, but normally the town, we vote to close the town offices at noontime on Christmas Eve, so I'm wondering if this board is open to that.
Do you need consensus, or?
We need a vote.
Need a motion, which I will be happy to make.
I have a motion. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to close the town offices, DPW, and Senior Center on Monday, December twenty-fourth, two thousand and eighteen, at twelve noon, to provide staff additional time with their families this holiday season. Staff who are normally scheduled to work this day shall receive their regular rate of pay. In the event that essential staff are called in to work, they shall receive their normal rate of compensation.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. I know that that's much appreciated by the staff.
Okay. Public comments.
Thank you. Madam Chair? My name is Mitch Cohen. I live in Whitney Street. I think this is my first time appearing directly before the board, so thank you for having me. I am serving on a couple of town boards, however, I'm not here on behalf of any of those boards, however, I am here on behalf of a hundred and twenty-three signers of a letter that I'll be presenting to you. I have an original plus six copies here, and I'll read from it, if that's all right with you. "We write with substantial concern regarding the town's inconsistent following of the open-meeting law and public records law. This letter includes a subset of issues we have noticed and recommendations for improvement. This letter is not a complaint under either law. While we believe complaints would be valid, we are, excuse me, more interested in improvements to how our town follows these laws. Please see the enclosure for dates and details regarding the most recent agendas and minutes which were posted for various boards and committees. I apologize, that list is a little out of date. That was compiled during the month of October. Many of these are inconsistent with the state's open-meeting law. In order for our town's residents to have transparent access to our boards and meetings, meeting minutes must be reviewed and should be posted in a timely manner per the open-meeting law. A timely manner is considered to be within the next three public body meetings or thirty days of the meeting, whichever is later, unless the public body can show good cause for further delay. We have a concern with Board of Selectmen appointments. Many residents are interested in serving on our boards and committees. There is not a consistent process that encourages new and qualified candidates. Examples: Residents who applied to the Master Planning Steering Committee were not interviewed beyond the initial application. Positions are automatically reappointed without notification to residents that the position is available. Positions are given to the same rotation of people without consideration of possible new candidates or the evaluation or performance of sitting members. Residents have reported difficulty in getting information from the town hall on how to apply and when seats are open. In one case, information was not provided until after selections have been made, despite requests for information placed months in advance, I believe that was regarding a ZBA alternate position. We recommend that when a committee or subcommittee has an open seat, the position be posted and publicized for thirty days, and a process is established for following to interview and deliberate for each candidate. That same process should occur in advance of a close of a term. This will improve the balance between long-term members with institutional knowledge and new members with fresh ideas. Further, the interview and deliberation process must be consistent with the open-meeting law. Specifically, the Board of Selectmen's Appointment Subcommittee, as a public body under the law, must post and hold all meetings in public. Alternately, interviews may be connected by the full board in open session. We recommend the Board of Selectmen should strongly support the efforts of the Cable Department to substantially increase the video recording of public meetings. John would be shocked if I didn't bring that up during this, of course. All public meetings should be recorded, broadcast, and made available online to all residents. We recommend the Board of Selectmen sponsor the authoring, review, and approval of an open-government bylaw. Many area communities have such bylaws in place to codify their community's respect for open government. We recommend the Board of Selectmen host trainings on the open-meeting and public records laws run by either state officials or town council. We recommend the Board of Selectmen annually remind all committees on the requirements that meeting minutes must be in accordance with the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, which includes, of course, the time, date, and place of the meeting, members present or absent, a summary of each topic discussed, the decisions made, and the actions taken at the meeting, the record of all votes, the name or signature of persons creating the minutes. We recommend adoption of these recommendations no later than March first of two thousand and nineteen. We, the undersigned, believe in an open and transparent operations form the foundation of local government. Northborough's full adoption of our recommendations will improve both operations and trust in our already excellent town government. Thank you, signed, residents of the town of Northborough, as signed in the enclosed pages. I know you haven't seen this letter before. I'm happy to take questions or happy to come back anytime.
Actually, we don't really do questions, because this is not on the agenda.
Sure.
We can take it under advisement and decide what steps we want to do as far as discussing it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more public comments? Yep.
I'm here in the thirty-first April Street. I was here a month ago, checking out on your white furniture's status, and I want to know what's happened in the last four weeks that's changed from then.
John, quick update?
Yep, we have a meeting scheduled for Friday, this upcoming Friday, at ten a.m., and we'll be reviewing the architect's contract and the budget for the project moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. New business, renewal of selectmen's licenses for the calendar year two thousand and nineteen.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to approve the renewal of the annual licenses for the calendar year two thousand and nineteen, as indicated on the two thousand and nineteen license renewals list.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor. Okay. Execution of Cemetery Deed one oh six eight.
I move the board vote to execute Cemetery Deed one zero six eight.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all is in favor. Okay. Any other business to come before the board?
Other business this evening? You do have a need for a brief executive session, though.
Okay, executive session pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter thirty, A, Section twenty-one, grievance, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter thirty, A, Section twenty-one, subsection three, collective bargaining, grievance, police officer, Level Three, grievance, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the board.
Motion made. Julianne?
I.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will go into executive session only to come out of executive session in a turn.